We'll go ahead and get started with tonight's work session. We only have about thirty minutes worth of items to talk through. So we'll have a little break between the regular meeting, between the work session and the, and the regular planning commission meeting. But I do need to give you a couple of updates on some things we have going on. And just answer some questions ahead of time so everyone will know kind of what we're working on for a couple of projects. In no particular order on these. Likely sometime in February, no later than March, I don't, I don't think, but likely on a February agenda, we will have for you a revised personnel policy. We, the city formally adopted their personnel policy en masse and they did that by ordinance, which made it very difficult to make any operational changes as you would need to, to go through your standard day-to-day operations. A simple, simple example of that, and let me say, your personnel policy covers all of your, of your personnel policies. But a simple example of that would be the need to change a, a social media policy. Right? Social media changes, it evolves, it does those things. So a simple example when that would be if you need to make a change to your social media policy as relates to how employees govern themselves on social media from a work, from a work perspective. Right? You can't, you can't really govern as an employer, some of the things employees say outside of the, outside of the workplace. However, because of that, because those things change from time to time, we have to amend those policies from time to time. That can be a leave time policy, a social media policy, a vehicle operation policy, all of those things that come in. So we approve those en masse in one policy procedure. And within that is a built-in mechanism to allow updates to that thing. About three years ago now, we transitioned from a, from an ordinance personnel policy or personnel manual to a resolution personnel manual, simply because it's easier to manipulate. And when I, I don't mean manipulate in a bad way, I mean just to function and use. That's a recommendation that, that we had from our attorneys about three and a half years ago. And we met with MTS last month. MTS is helping us do some of the rewrite and they suggested that as well. So we're trying to work with what MTS suggested as far as overall global policy for the city and what our attorneys have brought about. So when you see that personnel policy on the agenda, that's just a result of a couple of years' work for a general update. We'll get that out a little ahead if people have questions about that. But there's not a lot of substantive changes to what we have now, other than just operational updates for, for how those things are done. So see that, that's what that is. It only requires one reading. I mean, it's a simple, pretty simple document, but it, it is encompassing as far as how basic operations of the city are done. And we'll be glad to answer any questions on that when you, when you see that. But those are, those are standard functions. Again, MTS is, MTS is the author of about ninety-five percent, or about eighty-five percent of that policy that you see. So they've really helped us to put some of those things together with some boilerplate models. They do things from all across the state, so their policy and procedure they see is pretty standard and we're just simply improving to the standard. So when you see that, just know that most of that has been embedded, has been embedded through the attorneys and through MTS as far as their language on that. The one thing that will change, and this will really be the only item of substance that will change, will be the vesting rights of employees as, as employees. And when I say vesting rights, we're talking about at-will employment versus not-at-will employment. The city's policy right now, and has been for some time, when I say sometime, twenty years, is in conflict with the city's charter. What I mean by that is the city's charter clearly states that City of Fairview employees are at-will employees. So if you have a police officer, firefighter, public works employee, whoever they are, they're at-will employees, just like any other employee in the state of Tennessee. Our personnel policy, that's been in place since two thousand, actually since before that, probably early nineties, ninety-six, I think, allows for a, an appeal process on an item of suspension, demotion, or termination for a rank-and-file employee. That results in what the courts consider a property right to one's employment. And our, our attorneys have told us that the City of Fairview, as it relates to a rank-and-file employee, does not have the ability to have a process in place that would equate to property rights on unemployment position that is governed by the charter as being at-will. So we'll go through all that, all the employees. Now, that does not mean that our employees will not still have progressive discipline, all those things that go through the process. So it's not an elimination of that process. It's just a clarification between what has been the practice for the last twenty-five years versus what is clearly in the charter to be done. So that will be the biggest item of change. Everything else is basically a cleanup language. We've had this conversation with our department heads and staff already. Once we get all of the documents back, we'll meet with department heads, go through this, make sure we've worked through everything that affects everybody, because each department's affected a little differently by some of your time and attendance policies, all, all such as that. So when you get it, it will be as clean as what can we have clean by the attorneys and, and MTS, but we do need to get that thing updated. If that's what that is. And again, we'll be glad to answer any questions on it, but it's a pretty standard document. We're, we're trying to get to the same standard that everyone else is. Yeah, we'll let you, we'll let you know the ones. Now, if one is just a cleanup language or some other thing, we won't bore you with that, get into the weeds. But if there's anything of substance that's changed like that, like that policy, you know, that, that's a section that you're going to need to be able to answer questions on, or at least be able to leaf through it and find it. So on those, the ones that are, and there are probably going to be a half a dozen of those. So the ones that are, those will certainly make sure you can see the before and after, at least a Cliff Notes version of that. But everything else that's not that, if it's just a standard, then we won't bore you with the standard. There'll be some cleaner language, but the substance won't change. So we'll make sure you, you're able to easily identify those. But that's something we've been working on for a while and we've needed for a long time. When I say a long time, I'm talking twenty-five years. It's just, things change. Everything has a shelf life. And I understand how we got there, but we need to get in accordance with, with what's legal. So, so we'll get you that. The second thing that will be coming to you that will sound like there's a problem, and there's not a problem, but you'll need to know what this is, we are going to put out forbid our banking services. Right now, the City of Fairview banks with First Bank. Last year, the legislature adopted language such that municipalities are required periodically to bid out their banking services. That's not to say anyone's done anything wrong. There's no issue with where we bank now. There's no concern with the bank, but we do want to be in accordance with that legislation. So we'll go out and bid the banking services. You always get questions when that comes up, what's wrong with the bank now? Are we missing money? Are we not missing money? Who did something wrong? Who didn't do anything wrong? No one did anything wrong. We're just simply complying with the code that requires municipalities to bid out their banking services. At the end of it, it could still be First Bank, it could be another bank. One of the things that is important to us is online banking services, any municipality or any group who has multiple bank accounts. And as you guys know, we budget by fund or we budget by bank account to keep things clean. So when you see our budget, you'll get a budget report tonight. But when you see our budget, we've all been down this, we all know that anything that comes through, let's, let's take the park fund. The park, the park fund has its own checking account. And we budget income and outflows for that bank account through the year, so everyone knows where that is. So the ability to have online banking services to move money, transfer money, pay bills, that sort of thing, becomes important when you have multiple bank accounts. But the multiple bank accounts give you a clear picture of where you are financially. So that's why online banking becomes important to us, because we use multiple accounts. So that's where we get there. But when you see that, we're required by law to bid that out, and that's the purpose of that. So there's no other hidden, hidden reason for that, other than that we're required to do so. You're not going to make a lot of money on it, just because interest rates are so low. You know, typically, there's a debate in banking services between fees and offsetting fees with interest. You know, if you're banking fees, you're going to cost you a hundred thousand a year and you're going to make a hundred thousand in interest. It's a wash, when no one's making a hundred thousand in interest. So you have to, at this point, you have to look at banking fees rather than a wash between your fees and your interest. As it relates to, to that, all of our bond work, signature work, everything that needed to be done on the city's part for the bond issue is complete. The city signed the final set of documents this morning. Those will go back to the underwriter. They will be signed in the next couple of days. The city will receive its full bond fund amount that's coming to the city, nine million six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars on December fifteenth. So that money will hit our bank. We've already opened an account, a separate account for that fund, so there'll be no co-mingling of any dollars. I'll show you that tonight when we get into the, the financials. But we don't want to co-mingle any of those dollars. So if anyone ever has a question, where did every dollar of bond money go, you'll be able to see it in a separate checking account on its own, not co-mingle with any other dollar. So the only monies that go into that will be bond funds and the only, only money that goes out will be bond fund expenditures. And we'll have our own, our own ledger for that, for that fund. And also sunsets, we're required to have those dollars expended, not allocated, not approved for expenditure, but expended and moved out of the city's ownership within three years, thirty-six months. That three-years clock will start on December fifteenth when we receive the funds. From the day they come in, they must be fully expended and, and gone out of that account within thirty-six months. So we're not going to have a problem spending, spending that money in thirty-six months. As soon as we get into January, we'll start the capital. We will start spending money out of that fund in February. So there won't be a delay. We already have a plan I'll get to in a second for part of this. But, but that, that process is underway already. As it relates to those bond funds, once we get into February, we will have for you a calendar or schedule anticipated of bond fund events, items that are going to be paid for with the bond funds, and a rough schedule for when those things will take place. As you know, we have a list to be done, some road work that has to be done, some work on fire ranges that has to be done, playground work that has to be done. So the playground will be the first fully completed project, we understand that. But those dollars will be expended there, we're okay with, with those funds. The first item of infrastructure work that will be done will be the property that's out on Northwest Highway at ninety-six, so we can purchase property to improve that intersection and, and realign that road. Along with the purchase of property for the realignment, we are purchasing enough property for fire station number two at that site as well. We've already met with the property owner, negotiated that purchase generally. We did have an appraisal done on that property, so we know we're reasonably sure of the cost. Never a good thing, you can't really spend public dollars, city dollars, on property that you haven't had appraised. You have to have some, some idea. Market value is one thing, but appraised value is something else. We've already had the appraisal done. We had that done about three months ago. We got the appraisal back about six weeks ago. So we have appraisal for that property, we have a purchase flash for the property, and we'll move forward getting that information to you. And my hope is that we will be able to have a purchase contract for you to ratify on the first meeting in January and close on that property within forty-five days. So we will, we will move very quickly in getting some of that road work done and property acquisition done. So, and again, that will include property for the road, realignment, and a new fire station out there and training facility.
So the, the person agreed with the price and everything's good with that?
That's correct.
Okay.
So there, there was a total parcel of ten acres that was for sale out there. There is a, there's a developer who's looking to develop a part of, the greater part of the ten acres. We won't need the ten acres, we'll need about three. The property owner had been in some negotiations with that developer to attempt to purchase that property and do some development out there. I had pretty lengthy conversations with that developer this week, sent them our proposed footprint of property that we would need for the road and for the fire station. The remainder would be available to develop. The development that they're talking about does meet the 2040 comprehensive plan, meets the current zoning and the 2040 comprehensive plan. So we agreed in principle for their development going forward, the property, the portion of the ten acres they would need, the portion of the ten acres that we would need, craft, pulling that out, doing the survey work to make those two parcels, amend those two parcels so the footprint works. They agree to that, the property owner has agreed to that. I'll follow up with them again tomorrow and we'll start the contracting process to go. So we're, there are a couple of moving parts, but so far it is falling into place better than we hoped that it would fall in. So as soon as we do that, we will get with the state and start working on plans for the improvement of the intersection, the widening of the road on the property that we have, the replacement of the, of the bridge that's there with box culverts, and start the design for the installation of a traffic signal at Northwest and ninety-six. My guess is we'll, we'll have the plans drawn, at least close enough to work off of and bid, likely by June or July. So within this fiscal year, we'll have that work done.
And where is fire station number two, one, where's that property?
So it'll be at ninety-six in Northwest.
Oh, okay, right there.
So that's right. So as you're, if you're driving out Northwest Highway, we'll move the, that bridge, the box culvert that's there, it'll move about fifty feet to the right. There's, if you're, if you're driving out Northwest, there's a, a TVA power line, transmission line, that runs parallel to Northwest, or right, when you get there to the end. So when you cross the bridge, instead of that little bridge being there, that will be moved about fifty feet to the right. It'll be a three-lane box culvert, so it'll be able to have a turn lane in the middle. We don't want to do just a two-lane road, because we know traffic's going to grow out there. So as you cross that new, that three-lane box culvert that's over there, you'd be on a three-lane road, you would then turn to the right, just as you cross the bridge, you would turn to the right into the new fire station. There'd be a fire station, training facility there. They would access that off Northwest Highway and, and then go from, from their side out to the, the intersection. They would use the traffic signal intersection for their, for their main.
So how, so it's facing Northwest Highway, how far from ninety-six is it like?
Rough estimate, well, we haven't surveyed it out, but rough estimate's going to be about five hundred feet. Enough room that they can easily get, pull out of the, of the station. The, the setup would be if they get a call where they have to navigate ninety, ninety-six, the intersection of ninety-six and Northwest, they will be able to radio control that intersection. So when that fire truck pulls out, they get the tone, they pull out, they turn right on the Northwest Highway, they would then, they would then manipulate that intersection to get it to change, so they would get the green light. So when the fire truck makes it to the intersection, all the lights are red, except for theirs, and they can go out that, that intersection and get them space to do that, so.
So it's better for it to face Northwest than like an actual, also, I guess, the intersection with the light? So the state's on board with putting a light there? I guess they would if there's a fire station.
They say it needs a traffic warrants. So the state's not giving us any, regardless of fire station, the state has.
They're not giving any problems with that?
No, the state has, the state has agreed that that improved intersection needs to be signaledized. So they worked with us on that, no problem. They understand that, that that will go. That will help our fire station as well. The plan right now is, as, as we talked on the financials, we have an existing bond issue in addition to the new one. Our, the plan right now is that we will pay that off five years early. If we stick to the financial plan right now, that's set to pay out in 2029, we believe it's going to pay out in 2025. So what we will do in 2024, two, two years from now, two and a half years from now, we will contract a, or engage an architect to start doing design for the new fire station out on, on ninety-six at one, at Northwest Highway. So what we'll do is we'll engage that architect, there'll be two buildings going on at one time. There'll be a building next door to this one, or the, in the parking lot here for the, the new building that we would have on this site, as well as the building out on ninety-six for the fire station. Engage in that, we would pay off the existing bond in 2025, turn right back around to a second bond issue to fund those two things and use the debt service at that time to pay those off. So the net, the net to our cash flow would be zero. It's a cash flow neutral investment, but we're financially in a position now where we can do that and not spend again any future dollars. As you guys know, we're always, always trying to spend today's dollars tomorrow, not to dollars, not tomorrow's dollars, and we'll be able to do that on that, on that project.
So will the house next door be removed for the new building?
Initially, it was, but we're, in thinking through some of these things, we want to kind of keep that as much green space as we can. The, the initial plan or thought was purchase that property, raise the building, get rid of it, and you would put your new building on that site. With, but we kind of rethought this thing and we've come up with a way to save some money, we think, some significant money and get a better use out of that. And aesthetically, make things work. So the preference that we're looking at now, and obviously, this is because I say this is a preference, doesn't mean it is, you guys will vote on this. But where we are in trying to, to make that a little more appealing, so we can get better use of the park, what we would like to do is where the house is now, keep that lot as wooded as can be, so, and remove the house, clean it up, keep it wooded, put some extra parking on that site, and let, let that be an alternate entrance into Bowie Nature Park. Thinking is you could park here, park on that property, you'd have a secondary entrance into there, but it gives people the ability to use this as a town center, park in the town center, and then take advantage of all of the businesses that are in the shopping center. So in reality, you could park on that, on that site, which will be green space, make your way into the park via a trail, enjoy the park for the day, come out, then if you want to stop at a restaurant, a shop, whatever you're doing, you could do that and still leave your car parked. All right. So that leaves the space next door to us, right outside the window. The discussion for that has been what do you do with parking? If we don't use the, the other property for parking, what do you do? We would make that a two-story building, but it will be above parking. So the building next door would be covered parking, level one will be covered parking, parking being the existing asphalt that you see, and then it'd be a two-story building above, above that parking. The purpose for that is visually both roof lines from this building and that building would be the same. One wouldn't sit lower than the other. Lower level would be parking, you'd step up to two level and it gets you as close as you can visually to do there, and it makes use of the existing space we have for existing park. Trying to think about it in such a way where how do the buildings look? How do they function? How do we keep the space we have, but then get better use of the park through kind of a, a greenway space into, into the park and let people take advantage of the shopping center at the same? General thinking now. I hope that answers that question.
I'm, I'm just, you know, just curious, so.
Now, once we get into planning for all those things, we'll see how that goes. But the idea for that is simply to have an engaging entrance into the park, so that you can invite people to use the shops and visit the businesses that are here. People go into the park, now, they may go into the park and they may take their child to McDonald's when they leave. Horse riders aren't spending any money. They bring their horses from somewhere else, go into the park. That's not a knock on that, that's just the truth. Is. So our thinking is how do we invite people to shop in Fairview, spend money in Fairview, visit our businesses in Fairview, at the same time they're enjoying the amenities of the park? Open up parking and get them into the park, then everything that they would need is right next door. If that goes, then we will likely try to recruit some sort of outdoor store, somewhere you can buy hiking shoes, boots, bike store, that sort of thing, something outdoorsy, so that we can kind of have a space, you can come in, shop, enjoy the park, all the things that would. Hope it works. We're trying to, trying to see how that, how that functions, but.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking.
REI.
REI would be wonderful.
Yeah, yeah. Anything like that to get them, you know, just, just something to let people know that we want them to engage the park, use the park, but use the entrance in such a way so that it's not, it doesn't really affect the park so much, but it's certainly inviting to people who can come and spend some time in Fairview, shop, spend money, maybe have lunch, breakfast, what have you, but then be able to, to use everything we have next door, so. We know forever's a long time. We know the building that goes next door to us is going, that's a fifty or sixty-year building. And we're just trying to think of how do we maximize that, that potential? And if we have property that's a gateway to the park, that's a, that's an outstanding opportunity for us, so, we think. But as we get into all of that, all these things are going to require a lot of discussion and thought and process and plan, not going to happen today, but we want that. But we want that, we want that use, we want that visibility.
One other question. With the property for sale across from Bowie Lake Road, potential commercial, would it be feasible that there would be a traffic light at that inner, or right there? Is it hard for the fire trucks? I mean, I heard so many today, it just made me think about them, to get out there, because there's not a light?
We, we haven't experienced that.
There's not an issue with that? It's just when sirens are on, pretty much everybody stops, so.
You know, the issue really is not getting out of there, the issue is going up and down Highway one hundred, because in so many places, there's nowhere to go. But there, luckily, as a fire truck comes out, it's a taller vehicle, but as a fire truck comes out, there's pretty good sight distance, there's good visibility. So in both directions on one hundred, you can easily see that fire truck or ambulance coming out, and more times than not, you're going to have people stop. We have not experienced any. From a public safety perspective.
But that might be a good plan, I guess, if, you know, if that property over that, in that area, were to develop, that road could go straight across into there and maybe have an intersection or something.
Whenever they get there, we'll make the request, as we do for all those, who knows what we get.
Right.
But certainly we'll see. That leads me to the, the next. Cumberland Crowcut and one hundred. You guys may recall that the city has had some money available through the state for about seven years now for some improvements at Cumberland Crowcut and one hundred. That started out as a seventy-five, twenty-five match, seventy-five percent state, federal money, twenty-five percent local money, is about nine hundred thousand dollars. Sam Whitson, he knew that several years ago, we didn't, we didn't have the match money to make some of this stuff work. So Sam put us in contact with the decision-makers at the state at TDOT regarding their funding. So we went, met with them in two thousand seventeen in Nashville. At that time, the state agreed to pay or to fund our twenty-five percent match. So it was a hundred percent project at about nine hundred thousand. At that point, the city wasn't in any, any money for that. So as we got into the work for that, having money through the state, through the federal, once they, once they say you're funded, that doesn't mean there are dollars available, right? That means that's projected future dollars, so at some point, you'll have dollars available, but they're not available at that time. But at that time, the dollars were scheduled to be available for that project in 2022, to be completed in 2024, or by 2024. So Will Owen and I were working on, on that project, and we learned of the state project for the sidewalk on Highway one hundred from Bowie Lake Road out to the rec center. Deer Ridge Road is what they're doing. So, and we had a meeting in Nashville with all the decision-makers. They have no clue that we have that project on the books, and we start looking at this thing, and we realize they're going to do some work and spend some money and complete their project, and then we're going to spend some money to tear out their project and do ours, or we're going to do ours first and they're going to tear ours up to do theirs. It didn't make sense to do. So we pitched the idea to the state, thinking that they were going to tell us no. We did this last summer, June of 2020. We met with them to see if they would be willing to absorb the intersection project into the sidewalk project, thinking the less we have to replace, the more projects we're going to get. We were sure they're going to tell us no, but it was worth it to make the effort. So surprisingly for us, they reviewed it and said, yes, they would be willing to combine those projects. It did make sense to do that. So now, we would be getting a true nine hundred thousand dollars worth of work, not less than that, to do some repair and replace for the projects. So the state. So the state takes this thing on, they're working on contracts for us now to get those amended. And every year, the state had, had rejected traffic signal at, at the intersection. Just didn't meet the warrants. However, when the intersection improvements included sidewalks on the state projects, the state looked at that and come back and came back and said, hey, we, we learned of this Tuesday morning that they presented that to the traffic group. And they, they upon review of the sidewalk installation, determined that it does meet the warrants for signalization based on the sidewalk work that they're doing. So as a pleasant surprise to us, as a part of the combining these projects, we got a traffic signal out of it. All of that work has been done on the state side. They've drawn all the documents, they haven't released all that to us yet. But it does include the signalization, the work, traffic, all that. That project is scheduled, as I told you in the email, that entire project is scheduled to be let or put out for bid in December of 2022 with construction to begin in spring of 2023, about 18 months from now. So that work will include new sidewalk from Bowie Lake Road to 100. It will, or from Bowie Lake Road to Deer Ridge Road on the Walmart side of the road. Cumberland and 100 will be signaledized. There'll be a sidewalk project that goes back up to the school entrance, crosswalks on Highway 100, a full signalization of the intersection and then left-hand turn lanes off of 100 onto Crook and onto Cumberland.
Wow, people are going to be so excited about that.
So that, that is.
Daily.
That, that is a huge, huge win.
Yes.
For us. We, we, when they mentioned it, we didn't even think to ask the question. And then when, when they mentioned the inclusion of the, the traffic signal, Kevin muted his, his computer and he asked, did I, did I want to confirm? And I said, no, because I don't want to ask them twice. They've mentioned it, so we're not going to say anything. So we went back and they, they went, told us the whole project, the whole scope, everything that they've done, down to the hash marks on the crosswalks. So we are super excited to get that.
Great news.
Really good news for us. So, so we, we got lucky on that one. So that covers that. And then the only other two items I have operationally for you. I emailed you links to the new proposed Bellhaven subdivision out on Northwest Highway. There's about, there are about 10 pages of that. It has some topo, some other things. I believe page four will be the, the page that you guys are most interested in, which includes the amended layout. You may recall that it was discussed to have some changes on the townhomes, location, traffic flow, that sort of thing. So I believe page four of that document is really the document you're looking at, although you can look at all of them. I think the layout is the one that was most important. The elevations will be discussed in a little more detail when we get to the planning commission meeting. The developer, as I said in a previous email, the developer has sent letters to all of the adjoining property owners. They will, they will meet here at 4:30 on the 14th to have that meeting with all of the neighbors. Then they will make that presentation to you or the planning commission and, and you guys who attend at our 5:45 planning commission meeting, go through those things. It is not on the agenda for that, for the planning commission meeting that night. It's just a follow-up discussion to see where we are. Once we get to that point, then we'll make some decision as far as being on a planning agenda. The developer has asked us to go in and do a, a full engineering review of that submission. We have declined that request until we know that the footprint meets it. We have a lot of projects going on. We'll do a cursory review and get some information out. But if there are engineering questions at that planning commission work session, we likely won't be able to answer some of those because we're more concerned with layout, elevations, that sort of thing. The, the review takes some time and we have a ton of other stuff to review. So we're going to kind of set that one aside from a thorough, thorough review until we have some idea whether or not the appetite is favorable to, to that. That would be a big meeting. Also at that meet, at that work session, if we can fit this in, and we may need to stay after if we can. But as you guys are aware, we've been talking about this open space as it relates to our zoning and the design of subdivisions generally. So if we can fit this open space discussion in at the work session, we need to fit it in. If not, I'll just ask that everyone stay after the close of the regular meeting for the planning commission to have some of those discussions. We need to get that work hammered out so I can get this residential zoning to the BOC. We, we need to get that work done, but I can't really get that. That's the last piece of the puzzle is how do we consider this, this open space? What does that look like? Once we settle on that, I can get that to you guys and we're good to go. The next step would be formal adoption of the comp plan and that. Ready, residential be ready, comp plan's done. The next thing that we will have to focus on at that point will be capital work out of the bond. So. Luckily, we have a lot that we've accomplished, but all that's been low hanging fruit. Now the work gets done. Now, now, now we're into the meat of the things. Which is all good. No issue for us. It's just now, now's the time for work. We haven't had that before. We, everything we've done up to this point has been reactionary. We're no longer reactionary. Now, now it's delivery time and that's where we are. So those are just general updates, thoughts, questions, concerns. On those or anything else while we're, while we're in.
Since we were talking about sidewalks and accessibility, which love hearing about sidewalks down 100. We've been having some issues with sidewalks. For example, the intersection of Walmart, that sidewalk is completely destroyed just because of traffic and tractor trailers and so forth.
Correct.
Is, is that, is that on us or?
That, it's on the state. Now, now I kind of peek behind the curtain and how that, how that works. The state recognizes the sidewalk issue at Walmart is the placement of the sidewalk. Those trucks just don't have enough room to turn in right there. So when that comes out, when that work is done, that side, that section will actually be moved back. And that will be a drivable curb where you can drive over that, drive over that thing if they back it up far enough. So we know that exists. We have in the past, the city has taken on the cost to go back and make some minor sidewalk repair. You may remember a couple of years ago where we had the sidewalks that buckled in, in certain areas on, on 100. So we did, the city did go back and repair those. Engineering has looked at the, the one out, the one out here. They're back and forth in communication with the state to see, is that a chicken or egg project? Is that something that we, we go back and work on? One of the things that we've talked about is simply filling in with concrete the area that's there, not making any changes to the curb or, or the sidewalk, but just concreting in the gap.
Right.
To, to make some of that work. So I, I know it hadn't been too long ago that Kevin looked at doing some locate work out there to see what that is. We've communicated that back and forth. I don't know the answer for that, but I do know that we have been investigating how we put a patch on that until we figure out the, the long term.
It just, it looks absolutely horrible and that's good to know. So it's state project, if, if nothing else, potentially just a fix in the meantime.
Yeah, some, something to do there. And, and that will open up again. When that thing's done, that curb will be moved, moved back. Adele Drive, the drive that goes into Walmart is actually a city street. So where you turn into Adele, you go in, you get to the stop sign, you can go right into Walmart, or I'm straight into Walmart or turn right. Once you get through the intersection, you're on Walmart property. But the road itself, you, you'll notice it's stub streets to the left into the vacant property or to the right that goes behind the storage buildings out there. Those are ours. So we do have some, some responsibility in that, but the sidewalk stayed right away. So we've talked about trying to patch it until we can figure this thing out. But with anticipation, that's all going to be moved back. There's nothing else. We have about 10 minutes in between. We'll take just a quick break and then run through. Always thank you for your time to do this. There's a lot going on, but I thought 2022 would be the most progressive year we had. It's calendar year 2021 has been progressive for us financially. Calendar year 2022 and 2023, those two will be the most infrastructure aggressive years Fairview's ever had. That, that, a lot coming our way and it's all good. So. And then we'll take a quick break. Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Look at that chair tomorrow and see if it's okay.
We got new tables.
New stuff. New digs.
That one?
Look at that chair tomorrow and see if it's okay.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order at 7:04 PM. First item on the agenda is the roll call. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
And Mayor Rainey is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, prayer and pledge. Commissioner Lucas, would you say the prayer for us, please?
Please stand. Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We ask that you be with us tonight as we conduct matters of business for the city. Help us to make wise decisions. God be with each citizen, each leader of our city. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, approval of agenda and executive session announcements.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Number five, we will open the public hearing for anyone to discuss about the urban growth boundary. Anyone here to discuss about that? Okay. We will close the public hearing. Item number six, citizens' comments.
They're on none tonight.
Okay, no citizens' comments tonight. Item number seven, public announcements, awards and recognitions. A, city events.
Good evening. This past week was the opening weekend of Holiday Wonders at Bowie Nature Park. On Friday, which was Black Friday, which is our opening night, we had approximately 140 vehicles that came through the park. We had one family that came all the way from Fort Campbell out to the park. And then Saturday, we had another family that came all the way from Murphysboro. And they're going to be coming back here in the next couple of weeks to bring their grandkids as well. Just reminder, it's going to be going on Thursday through Sunday until January the 9th. Tickets are available at City Hall and online and also at the gate. That's all.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Vice Mayor, Mr. Ross, will you just remind us of the tree lighting Saturday?
Yeah, sorry about that. This Saturday is going to be the tree lighting ceremony. The event is from 2:00 PM until 6:00 PM. We're going to have a petting zoo. The high school band is going to be there performing as well. The Chamber is going to be hosting their tinsel tree trail for everyone to come out and see. There's going to be multiple vendors and food trucks. It's just, it's going to be a great evening. And then we can finish up. Everyone can go out to Holiday Wonders afterwards. But the tree lighting ceremony is going to be, it's going to be a great event.
Item B, presentation of funds raised for Treehouse Playground from Friends of Bowie Nature Park and the Playground Committee.
Hello all. Let me get my right note here. Just wanted to kind of recap and thank everybody today. We're going to present the city with a check from the funds that have been raised through a myriad of means we'll talk about in a moment. And just wanted to take this time as a big thank you to everyone and kind of recap the history of how we got where we're at and what's coming in the future. Back in 2019, fourth quarter, the Playground Group was formed. That quarter, we went through citizen surveys, playground tours, vendor presentations. First quarter of 2020, we did our design specifications, got those complete, got RFP responses from four vendors. Second quarter of 2020, design refinement process with the selected vendor. Third quarter 2020, final design and pricing proposal presented and accepted by the VOC. Fourth quarter of 2020 through fourth quarter of 2021, including today, it was a year of fundraising focus, culminating in the check we'll present up to the city. And then second quarter of 2022 is the actual playground install with Saturday, July 2nd, 2022, the Playground Grand Opening. The total amount of funds raised through the Playground Rebuild Project with the Friends of Bowie Nature Park and the check that we'll present today is $136,650. There's another component of citizens' funding that has come in, donated directly to the city, with my last number there being $37,834, for a total community fund raised bucket of $174,484. There are still some additional funds trickling in now, and the Friends will continue to accept that money. Eileen will step up right after I step down to explain that process. And that money can continue to come in and be used for, if the playground's fully funded there, maintenance, other things that may be needed. In addition to that, there was meetings in the past few months that approved the up to $600,000 funding from the City of Fairview. So all of that money together is what's going into the project to make it occur. In addition to the donated funds, over 1,000 cumulative hours have been donated by many volunteers to the project throughout the planning and fundraising phases. So on behalf of the Playground Group, a huge thank you to everyone that's participated in the project, including the community at large, who's supported the project with yard signs everywhere, hats, shirts, the big payback and other donations, our vendors and businesses in town that have contributed through direct donations and hosting multiple fundraising events, the Friends of Bowie Nature Park, the nonprofit partner of the Playground Rebuild Group that became our finance manager basically to help us collect those funds and track those, the View Community Resource Coalition CRC for their efforts in donation, the Pork in the Park Event that gave us a donation, the volunteers that staffed the booth and the tent promotions over this summer and this year, the various teams on the Playground Group, because we had a lot of people with a lot of backgrounds and expertise, all sharing time, countless hours in meetings, but our core project team, design selection team, fundraising team, communication and social media team, donor recognition team that sent out thank yous, the Parks and Landscaping Board, all of the VOC members that have been supportive of the project, the city manager for helping bring everything together at the end, and making sure all the paperwork was in place and we did everything properly, and then finally, Great Southern Rec. So with that, I've got the check the bank likes and then a check for a photo here we can get somebody from the city to accept.
Why don't we all accept? I think that would be good. And I have a camera.
Perfect.
And then you guys want to come up from that?
Okay.
Yes.
So we need to be evenly distributed on both sides of the sign.
Yeah, hold the check up. Or does this, does this move? Okay, now the voting can move it from. Because this is the only thing that's.
Now you can just set that down.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Eileen will just explain about the funds that are still trickling in that people can still reach out. But thank you so much.
Okay. I'm president of Friends of Bowie Park, for those of you who don't know. And the Playground account for the Friends of Bowie Park is going to remain open. We still have a few things trickling in. I believe we got a check for $500 today. And anything we get in time will be turned over to the city by the city's deadline, which is December 29th. If we get anything after that, like in January or whatever, we will turn it over to the city. And my understanding is that will go into a maintenance fund. Is that correct? Okay. And the fence is still another project. And I understand the city's going to be seeking donations of $50 that's going to go directly to the city that will not go through the Friends for pickets personalized with somebody's name on it or whatever, a business, I guess, or whatever, whenever the city puts up the link on their website. And the Friends will be happy to publicize that and help sell them. So there you go. All right? Thank you. This is very exciting. I know that the cities and the children are looking forward to this, so.
Vice Mayor, if I could just express my personal gratitude to you guys so much that you've stayed so focused and so driven in countless hours. I remember seeing those, you know, design meetings early on. It seemed like a tall task that would probably never come together. It seemed impossible. And you guys, you guys never lost the, you know, the momentum or the drive or the push. So thank you guys so very much.
Vice Mayor, I can't believe we're here. I just can't believe we're here at this moment, right now. The materials have been purchased. I just can't believe it. I mean, it's just, just amazing. So I am so excited to have that thing built and then our next step, getting out there and cutting the ribbon and all. I just, it is just surreal that we are here today. Thank you guys so much for everything you've done.
I believe item C is deferred. Seven C?
Yes, Vice Mayor, that's correct. Item seven C and item eleven.
Eleven A.
Eleven A, that's correct. Those will both be on the agenda for the present, for the presentation to be made on December 16.
Okay, on to item eight, staff comments and monthly reports. A, planning report?
Yes, Mayor, I'll have those for you now. And I'll do A through D, just so we'll, we'll go through. On the planning report, just a quick information update for you. A couple of things for the, for the month so far. We've issued 10 building permits, which this is kind of the lean time of the, of the year for those building permits. We understand that. Overall, for the year, we're a little ahead of schedule from where we thought we'd be, and we anticipate that will pick up in the spring. So a little low for this month, but overall, we're ahead. And we anticipate being substantially ahead by the time we get to the end of the year. It's just this time of the year for that. Also, with the planning reports, so, so you'll know, we'll get into this in just a few minutes. But as it relates a little to planning, you may recall that the city was slated to receive $2,450,000 in federal Recovery Act money or the American Recovery Plan. We were to get that in two, two installments. We received the first of those installments, and the city has committed to spend that $2,450,000 on stormwater projects. When we get to the finance report in just a moment, I'll show you where those dollars are. We've received half of those dollars. We also have drafted, our engineering department has drafted a stormwater management plan. It's on my desk right now. We'll review that. The plan right now is to get that to the VOC in January to adopt that plan or adopt those regulations. Once we get the regulations adopted, we will move forward with a capital plan on the stormwater projects to get that work done. So we are ahead of schedule on, on our stormwater as it relates to the use of those funds.
I'll run down these just quickly. Um, on the, the first two pages, you'll see an account list, those are the city's checking accounts, those are all of the city's checking accounts, and I'll leave the deposits, um, on hand, um, um, in those accounts as of today. We continue to be a little ahead on our, on our cash, um, which is, which is good, that's where we want to be. Our budget continues to, um, see revenues a little higher than what we thought they would be, and our expenditures, uh, continue to remain a little lower than what we budgeted. Now, we do capital, um, purchases in the second half of the year, we don't do capital purchases July through December, just to make sure our cash flow holds. So we do have some capital purchases to make in, in January and February, but we do that intentionally to make sure our cash is going to be where we think it is, and right now we're a little ahead. Um, the last line on page one that you see, uh, you see a GF Capital, that's General Fund Capital, there's a balance of one million, five oh eight. Um, the majority of that balance is the half of the Recovery Act money that we received. We received that money about six weeks ago, deposited those dollars into that account, and we will expend those out on the, um, stormwater, the amount that's been allocated to stormwater. So, uh, that number's a bit inflated. As we go through the process and we go through subsequent years, those dollars will be spent down, but the purpose for them being there is to be spent down, so that's not uncommon for, for what we're looking to do. Um, the next page of the three, um, again, it's, um, center of this, you'll see, um, a line item, the second line item that you see is account number ending in twenty-two forty-five. It's a checking account, it's active, it has a zero balance. That balance will substantially change thirteen days from today. Um, that is the bond issue account. Um, we have completed all of the necessary work and completed all of the signatures, um, for the closing of the bond issuance. Those dollars, nine million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, will be wire transferred into this fund on December 15th. As soon as those dollars are in the bank, we will get to work on the capital plan for those dollars. As I've expressed to all of you, we have three years to spend those dollars by law. That's not an attempt to just expedite the spending of money, we're required to spend those bond dollars within that period. So, at your next budget report, you'll see nine million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in that account, um, with the anticipation that we will spend all of those dollars on capital for the projects we've, we've, um, discussed, and we'll have that presentation for you as well. The next page, page three of the items, um, is something that, um, that we present each month. This is our reserve fund account. As you're aware, uh, we sep, we separate our reserve fund, um, not only within our bank, but from a separate institution and investment account. Um, our reserve fund as of October 31st was one million, two thousand, five hundred thousand dollars. That reserve fund is unaffected and, um, unused, unassociated with any other account we have, so that million, two thousand dollars is a separate, um, reserve fund, separate from any operations that we have, and we maintain that fund in that way. Um, the only thing that that fund will do is increase, there won't be any dollars coming out of it. Um, you may recall that we had adopted a resolution authorizing me to expend reserve funds if we needed to expend reserve funds to pay for the playground equipment, had the playground equipment come in prior to the bond issue money. That won't be the case because the bond issue money will hit the bank on December 15th. So there'll be no change other than increase to, to the reserve, the reserve fund that you see. The remaining documents that you see are the, uh, statement of revenues and statement of expenditures. Um, you can, you can go down those line items, it, um, those mirror our budget, so every revenue line item is a revenue line item in the budget, and every expenditure line item is an expenditure line item in the budget. Again, we are, we're a tick over in our revenues and a tick under in our expenditures, um, which is what we hope for every year, and there's been no, no change to that. We'll do a thorough review of those numbers in January, we'll present to you an amended budget in February, and that amended budget will include the revenues from the bond issue, the revenues from the Recovery Act, and the proposed expenditures of those dollars for the remainder of this year. So, uh, we'll get right to work on making sure that budget includes these dollars. Um, we did not include them in the original budget, simply because we're, there's no guarantee they're going to be here. Um, until we know that revenue from an outside source is going to be here, we hold up on that. So, um, overall, I'm completely surprised at where we are today financially, knowing I sat in this room four years ago and this was a wish. Um, we put a plan in place, we, we had it going, and to sit here tonight and know that you have bond funds in the bank, um, you have a, a double A bond rating, you just borrowed nine and a half million dollars on two percent interest, you have a million dollars in reserve and an operating account of one point nine million dollars. That, that is an unfathomable result from where we were just a few years ago, so all of you should really, um, leave here with a sense of, uh, accomplishment for one, not only what we've done to get us here, but what this will mean to the community going forward. Get back tonight and report for us. Um, the last, uh, the last two things I have for you on item C, the Public Works Report, we have transitioned from the chipper service to the leaf service. If anyone has questions about, uh, leaves or leaf pickup, um, they can go on the city's website, it's unchanged from what it's been for the last couple of years. We do deliver the leaf bags, we pick those up, we run the same route for leaf service that we do for the chipper service. The only difference is we pick up bagged leaves rather than, rather than chip debris, but if anyone has any question about that, it's on the city's website on the Public Works tab. Lastly, for the city manager report, um, outside of everything I've just described for you, the, the picket, um, the fence pickets for the playground, um, that purchase process, the website for that is complete, it will go live on Tuesday. So on Tuesday, you'll be able to go onto the city's website, there will be a link, um, to an additional website we've already developed, uh, that you'll go to that link, you'll be able to, um, purchase the pickets on there. Um, once someone makes the purchase, those dollars will go to our PayPal account, that those dollars will then go into the Bowie Park Fund to be expended for the playground. There's a twenty-three digit limit on the, on the pickets, so when you go on the website, you'll click to that site, you'll be able to type in how you want your picket to read. Once you confirm that, you'll hit enter, it will take you to the pay site, you pay the fifty dollars, we'll receive that, and then when we order the fence and do those things, those items will be included on that list. There's also an opportunity for, um, uh, and someone to enter their name and be included on a web, on a, an, uh, email, a newsletter. Regarding the fence and the playground itself, we're working on that, so there can be a general update for where that thing is. So if someone comes on when they make that purchase for those pickets, they can click their name on there for the newsletter, and we're working on being able to distribute that out, so people will know, um, as, as close we can in real time where we are through the playground project, from the time they purchase their picket through the time they can play on the playground and open and close the gate. So, we look forward to getting that. But again, that will be up, up and running. All the work is done on it on Tuesday, we're just trying to confirm, uh, the transfer of dollars. We'll do a test run on Monday, and then it will go live on Tuesday. So that work is complete. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, for me, just real quick, on the financial board, to just extend our thanks, our gratitude, uh, you know, thanks has never said enough, everybody works really hard, especially our staff, and, and just make sure you're passing along to the, you know, to the staff, the department heads. I know for the last few years, department heads have been revising their budget, working leaner and leaner, and trying to find ways to, forward thinking and plan for us, and, and we're starting to see the results, so please, thank you to you and, and thank you to the staff.
Absolutely, yes, sir. Thank you.
Item number nine, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson? Aye. Number 10, old business. Ten A, rezoning of property located on Fairview Boulevard. We will open the public hearing for anyone to speak about that. Alrighty, we will close the public hearing now. Item number, uh, ten two, second and final reading of ordinance 2021 dash 18. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview by rezoning 1.67 acres of property located on Fairview Boulevard, Williamson County Tax Map 042 HC, parcel 011.00, from R40 Single Family Residential to C3 Commercial. Property owner Donald Hughes, applicant Bill Codis, Wash Associates.
Vice Mayor Anderson, if, if there, if there any que, I apologize, I know there's no motion. If there are any questions on this, the, the developer for this project is not here tonight, uh, the property owner is here tonight to express their, uh, continued support for the, for this annexation, should the board consider favorable recommendation for, for rezoning.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second discussion.
Vice Mayor, I, I wish the applicant would, would have come tonight, just, just in good, good favor, but this, this matches our future comp plan, the, the planning commission had a good discussion on it, um, and agreed that it, it kind of falls in line. I think it was unanimous in approval on that night from the planning commission side, but I think it's going to be a good, good site, and it's, uh, the, the first time we're going to use our new commercial zoning designation that we've worked on to try and decipher and, and identify and, and future plan for, for areas and targets and designations.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, I, right on. I, I, I think it's a, a great place for this car wash. I think, uh, the City of Fairview, uh, could use, uh, that type of car wash. Uh, I know that they are currently in Dixon, and, um, uh, I, I really like the idea. Good place for it as well.
And I'm excited about, um, the way we're, uh, zoning commercial now, um, so that we can make sure that the uses out here are the best for our city. So, um, with that, um, I guess if there's no more discussion, uh, Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Okay, so eleven A is deferred, which would be our new business, so that would mean we have no new business tonight. So item number 12, communication from mayor, vice mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Butler?
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Just thank you again to you guys and, and your effort and, and making the, uh, the, this playground a reality. I can't wait to see it out there in the next few months. And tree lighting this weekend, hope to see everybody out here. If anyone sees a, a pink Christmas tree out there, that is my girl's, and it, it's flashing brightly. Um, and then the, the reverse Christmas parade on the 18th, of course, I hope we can see everybody out there and make the best of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dawson?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, hope to see everybody to come out to the, uh, the tree lighting, um, and, uh, to see the lights in Bowie Park. I, I think they are just great. We, uh, went last week and got to see Santa. Um, it was so exciting, got to take a picture with Santa, um, the first bald Santa I've, I've ever taken a picture with. So it was, uh, very unique, very unique, the kids loved it. Man, I, once again, I just cannot believe that we're here, uh, that we got this thing funded in the time that we did. It's just, uh, just amazing to me. Um, and something that I thought was very unique about this was just seeing the community come together, um, the, the people that were mobilized, uh, being at the ballpark and seeing the tents set up and people giving donations, um, uh, man, I, that's why I moved to the City of Fairview, uh, that, that, that small-town community feel, uh, that we want to protect so desperately. And, uh, we, we certainly did, and, uh, I, I appreciate everybody that has worked on this with all of the committees, all of the people that have donated, and, um, all of the people here in the City of Fairview. This is going to be such a, a very, very special project. And then, coming to the budget, you know, man, we, we all have budgets at home, we all work within a budget, and, uh, wanna say thank you to all of the, uh, the, the employees that have worked on this budget for the City of Fairview. Um, this shows how responsible the City of Fairview is with the tax, uh, tax money that we, we pay into every year. Uh, and of course, that's important, and we are taking that money and we are about to do huge things with that money now. So, uh, thank you to, to the employees, thank you to the citizens for providing that money for us to do, um, things that we've needed to do for quite a while here in the City of Fairview. Thank you.
Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, want to echo what the other commissioner said about, uh, the playground. I had no doubt in my mind that this community would, would do exactly what it did. Did it a little faster than I thought, to be honest with you, but, uh, I had no doubt. I tell everybody, everywhere I go, Fairview is probably, or no, it is, it's not probably, it's the most giving community that I've ever lived in, um, hands down. And so, huge congratulations, big night, and like Commissioner Dawson said, I can't wait till we're out there, uh, cutting a ribbon and hearing and, and seeing all these kids playing on the playground. Um, also, big, um, a big shout out from me to, um, our fire, uh, department. Uh, Monday I had a, a medical emergency and, uh, pulled into the fire station, and, uh, there was nowhere else for me to go, and I pulled into the fire station, and they were on it really, really quickly in what could have been possibly pretty bad, and so, big thank you to those guys, uh, for what they do. I don't think they get nearly the credit that they deserve. Um, and so, big thank you, uh, from my family to those guys. And then, the, uh, light show at Bowie, uh, my family got to attend on, I think it was Saturday night, and, uh, had a great, great time, uh, me and my wife and my daughter, and we got to pull over onto the side and watch the light, the Christmas tree dance around to all these different songs, and, uh, I may have sang a little louder than probably I should have. Got our picture taken with Santa, got some hot cocoa and some snacks and, and all that kind of good stuff, and so, I encourage you, if you haven't been, uh, go out and, and support this. Um, it's, it's us supporting these kind of events that allow us to continue to do these things year after year, and for them to get bigger and bigger, uh, every year, and so, thank you to all of those, uh, who have helped bring that to the City of Fairview, great event, and, uh, hopefully we'll see all y'all, uh, Saturday at the tree lighting here at City Hall. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, what an exciting time. I just have had visions of, you know, children playing on the playground, and at my shop, I mean, it's constant. The kids come in and they're like, when's the playground going to be done? Because we have a big poster-sized picture of what it's going to look like, so, I mean, um, from the Friends of Bowie Nature Park, um, the Playground Committee, all the donors, the city staff, uh, the board, um, it, and, you know, just know that, you know, the money's coming from our community, and the majority of it, which is, you know, really exciting because we all have been a part of funding this and putting this together, and to be able to see the children have a new playground and enjoy the park is just, it, I, I can't wait. It's going to be so exciting. So thank you all for everything that you've done. There's been so much hard work and time and effort put into this. Um, I unfortunately, I have been at the tree lighting, I can't, I can't even remember not being at the tree lighting. I've lived here over twenty years, and ever since we've had a tree lighting, um, I've been there, I've usually taken pictures for the newspaper. My daughter, um, turns thirty years old on, um, Saturday, so I am going to be at her surprise birthday party, hope she's not watching this, on, on Saturday, and it is her birthday on Saturday, so this was planned, I did not know that until I was made aware that we're doing this. So I will not be there on Saturday, unfortunately. I will be at her surprise birthday party, it's in Chattanooga. So if it was here, I kind of would try to makeshift and be at both, but I know it's going to be a great event, I encourage everyone to be there. It's going to be bigger than it's been in the past and longer, and the tinsel trail and the food trucks and everything that goes into it, and just know I'm there in spirit. I, I hate missing this, but I think everybody understands. Um, just what a wonderful time in Fairview to have, you know, uh, the budget and everything, you know, with all the funding and the projects that we're about to, um, embark on in the city, and I think it's going to be, it's important for our community to see the money coming in and it going out to do something, you know, do all these different projects. Uh, I... Just what a wonderful time in Fairview to have, you know, the budget and everything, you know, with all the funding and the projects that we're about to embark on in the city. And I think it's going to be, it's important for our community to see the money coming in and it going out to do something, you know, do all these different projects. I appreciate the staff and everyone involved in just, you know, managing this money and being good stewards of it, so that our community will benefit. So, it's just an exciting time in Fairview, and, you know, I'm excited to be a part of it. And so, with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned. Thank you.